Call the meeting to order any items from the public.
Yes, sir. How you doing? Come on up to the podium. State your name for the record, please.
Good morning.
Good, good.
I come to talk today to talk about my community, my community and the surrounding community.
No, just be yourself, be comfortable, sir.
The community and surrounding, we have no parks, no recs.
Are you the one that wrote the email?
I did.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Yeah, you got a response too by Matt Umstead, right?
Uh, yes.
Right? And that's how we feel, so thank you for being here.
As I said in the email, we have no parks, no recs, anything of that nature. We have no sidewalks to get our children or any youth in the neighborhoods. Even if you wanted to go to the school, they would have to walk across the house. They would have to walk across the house to get there.
Okay.
Where do you live in Fallonburg?
Potomac Station. It's a pretty meaningful community. It's, um, we have the Walmart.
Oh, okay.
We have plenty of land where something could be built for us, something of that nature. We just feel that with all the new communities that's coming around, it's gonna be a lot of years. Crime rate could go up, things of that nature, but the kids have nothing to do.
Well, we're very, uh, much involved with kids, you know, we all love kids, children. The, um, Matt summed it up a little bit on his email. Uh, we, you have the soccer fields, you have the, you know, uh, down there on the Dupont property, which is over by the schools, right? Um, there is a, um, as Matt said, there's a 10-acre little park that's being looked at as a community park with walking trails and things of that nature. There's also, um, we own a decent amount of property on the river. It's Sportsland Paradise that we're looking at, of doing a park there sometime soon. Uh, the Parks and Rec just, uh, pretty much $120,000 study that they're gonna, uh, start on to be a needs study, to see what we need, how we need to go about doing it and things like that. So, you know, quality of life means a lot to us right now, uh, the same as it does to you, and I can only tell you that that's, that's our goal, is to try to get some things, is that right, Mr. Goak and Air, on the north end, some on the south end, and Eddie Setts on the Parks and Rec Board, so I'll let him take over and talk to you a little bit real quick. Usually we don't respond, but this is important, that we want to be able to have a little bit of dialogue with you, especially since you took the town to write the letter and show up today. So, Mr. Goak and Air?
I feel the same way, President Coopnaver, you know, number one, thank you, you know, thank you for your concern, you know, we are aware of some of the deficiencies that we have, and we are in the process of trying to identify the areas, uh, where we think that, you know, the potential growth is, and where the recreational areas are going to be needed. So, um, my response, uh, because I was, I was actually prepared to send you a response, and I was glad to see that Matt did, because he was in so much more detail than what I did, but he's been a writer all his life, so he looked good with his response, and I think his response, I would felt would have been very satisfactory to you. You coming here today just kind of reinforce, you know, your, your belief and your efforts into, you know, what you want to accomplish, so, um, you know, we are moving on there, saying that, as Mr. Coopnaver said, the study is in its very early stages, you know, it hasn't been awarded to a contractor yet, but, um, it's going to get moving, and, uh, I expect real good things to come out of that.
I think the harder thing to get accomplished is going to be any sidewalks to connect any parks, because we're such a rural area, so I think most of the places that we would have would still take some type of transportation to get some people on, and maybe something like that, we can check with the Eastern Panhandle Transit Authority too, maybe start focusing on picking kids up to go to the parks, or even if that's even feasible, you know what I mean? But, uh, the Sportsland Paradise property, which is down, um, on the north end, it's right on the Potomac River at low, low water, um, and, uh, we're looking for that to be a pretty nice park one day, and right now currently that's 34 acres, and we're looking to expand that out to at least 50, maybe 70, alright?
One last question.
Okay.
I'm gonna track coaching practice, the high schools open the track at a certain time. Is that feasible in Western Virginia?
That's gonna be more the school board, see, we're two separate governments, um, and we have nothing to do, well, we have a great communication with Dr. Murphy and the president, but at the same time, uh, it's two different governments, I'm sorry. But you can, you can ask them at one of their board meetings, okay?
Yep, no problem.
Alright. Thanks for being in Burke County. Anyone else? Alright. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, I move the agenda for April 22nd as presented.
Have a motion on the floor, they'll have a second. Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
I just want to make it clear, I'm not used to making all these motions.
I'm sure you'll do quite well, Mr. Barnhart. Alright, any questions on purchase order? Internal budget revision, Mr. Wine, you have some?
I will, the sheriff does.
Okay, you have something to present to us?
Thank you. So, the sheriff has a few, uh, starting with his, uh, vehicle supplies, uh, he was asking to move for the council permission to move $4 from material supplies to his maintenance repaired auto, so, not really sure what they did there, most of that stuff is stock.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I didn't, you know, they had a line on you.
They don't, it was zero, I mean, with $3.17 expenditure.
Got it covered.
Yeah. Man, we gotta, we gotta watch his budget a little closer, I mean, it's $3.
Right.
I mean, this is...
Yeah.
His next one is, uh, he needs to reduce a negative deficit in his professional services, yet again looking to move $3,011 for material supplies. Uh, the next one, uh, would be for his printing line item, uh, to move $560 from materials and supplies to printing, uh, to reduce the deficit or to amend the deficit. And from overtime, uh, he's looking to move, uh, $2,000 from his salary line item down into his overtime line item, uh, and I believe the last one, uh, is from, uh, no, that's tax office, from 226, uh, it's $432 that he's looking to remedy by moving money from material supplies down into bonds and insurance.
Alright, anybody have any questions for Mr. Wine? Don't make it too easy on him. Alright, we have some changes status, we have a new hire recommendation received by Randy Lilly, Director of Emergency Management for James Shawn Wolford, uh, as the emergency manager effective June 1st, 2021, with a salary of $50,000. A new hire recommendation received from Sheriff Nathan Harmon for Robert Diaz as a part-time administrative assistant slash dispatcher effective April 26th, 2021, with an hourly rate of $14, $14.56.
Mr. President, you approved a new hire recommendation for this position probably two weeks ago, and the person was to take that position the day they were started, they declined the offer.
Okay.
This is just still in the same position at this weekend.
Alright. We have a change in status received from Jennifer Swisher, 911 Director for Christina Sandova. It was, oh, right? The ball, I'm sorry, uh, to go, to go from telecommunicator 2 to senior telecommunicator effective April 1st, 2021, with a salary change from $43,038 to $43,874. And Morgan West to go from telecommunicator 2 to a senior telecommunicator, in addition to receiving her certified training officer increase effective April 1st, 2021, with a salary change of, from $43,563 to $44,374. Change in status received from Tim Ziya, Community Correction Director for Thomas Anderson, to go from peer recovery coach, uh, for the QRT, to case manager for the QRT effective May 3rd, 2021, with a salary change from $34,559 to $40,060. Resignation received from the Assessors Office from Michelle Keith, um, who transferred to, uh, to the Fire Board effective April 15th, 2021. Resignation received from the Day Report Center for Cassidy Moore's effective, um, April 30th, 2021. Any questions on the change in status? We have a set of minutes, everyone was present for April 8th, 2021, any changes or corrections for those? County Council, County Council, um, will be meeting next Thursday on the 29th here in the chamber, and Boards and Commissions, we have Library at 5:00 PM tonight, Ambulance Authority for tonight has been canceled, Mr. Wine, I think that's what she was talking to me about earlier today, about Boards and Commission meetings. Um, and, let me see, the 26th, May, um, Monday, the 26th, 1:00 PM Region 9, 1:00 PM Historical Landmarks, 5:00 PM Water District, on Wednesday, the 28th, at 10:00 AM CBB, 3:00 PM Senior Services. Any changes or corrections to Board and Commissions?
Yes, sir, the Health Department, which was scheduled this week, on the 19th, uh, was moved up to the 26th, cause, uh, we forgot to schedule it on the 19th, so I'll have the Board of Health and the Water District kind of conflicting, and I think, um, Region 9's gonna have a meeting on the 26th also.
Okay. Talked to Mr. Kearns yesterday morning going to work and just checking in, make sure him and his staff are doing okay, and, um, holding together, is the best I can say, probably.
Well, with the, uh, the vaccinations moved to Charlestown, only two days a week.
Right.
That will give them three days a week.
He's, he's saying that there's, um, they must have done some yesterday too, um, but he said there was only 400 people that signed up, he said, you know, the, the...
Well, the interest is starting to slack off.
To be a needs study to see what we need, how we need to go about doing it and things like that. So, you know, quality of life means a lot to us right now, the same as it does to you. And I can only tell you that that's, that's our goal is to try to get some things, is that right, Mr. Gokenaire? On the north end, some on the south end, and Eddie Sats on the Parks and Rec Board, so I'll let him take over and talk to you a little bit real quick. Usually, we don't respond, but this is important that we want to be able to have a little bit of dialogue with you, especially since you took the town to write the letter and show up today. So, Mr. Gokenaire?
I feel the same way, President Gokenaire. You know, number one, thank you, you know, thank you for your concern. You know, we, we are aware of some of the deficiencies that we have, and we are in the process of trying to identify the areas where we think that, you know, the potential growth is and where the recreational areas are going to be needed. So, um, my response, uh, because I was, I was actually prepared to, to send you a response, and I was glad to see that Matt did because he was in so much more detail than what I did. But he's, he's been a writer all his life, so he, he looked good with, with his response. And I, I think his response, I would felt would have been very satisfactory to you. Uh, you coming here today just kind of reinforce, you know, your, your belief and your efforts into, you know, what you want to accomplish. So, um, you know, we, we are moving on to everything that, as Mr. Gokenaire said, the study is in its very early stages, you know, to date even, hasn't been awarded to a contractor yet. But, um, it's, it's going to get moving. And, uh, I, I expect real good things to come out of that.
I think the harder thing to get accomplished is going to be any sidewalks to connect any parks because it, we're such a rural area. So, I think most of the places that we would have would still take some type of transportation to get some people on. And maybe something like that, we can check with Eastern Panhandle Transit Authority too. Maybe start focusing on picking kids up to go to the parks or, even if that's even feasible, you know what I mean? But, uh, the Sportsland Paradise property, which is down, um, on the north end, it's right on the Potomac River at low, low water. Um, and, uh, we're looking for that to be a pretty nice park one day. And right now, currently, that's thirty-four acres. And we're looking to expand that out to at least fifty, maybe seventy. All right?
One last question.
Okay.
Um, I'm gonna track coaching practice. The high schools open the track at a certain time. Is that feasible on Western Virginia?
That's gonna be more the school board. See, we're, it's two separate governments. Um, and we have nothing to do, well, we, we have a great communication with Dr. Murphy and the president. Uh, but at the same time, uh, it's two different governments. I'm sorry.
No, that's no problem.
But you can, you can ask them at one of their board meetings. Okay?
Yep, no problem.
All right.
Well, thank you for having me.
Thanks for being in Burke County. Anyone else? All right. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, I move the agenda for April twenty-second as presented.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
I just want to make it clear that I'm not used to making all these motions.
I'm sure you'll do quite well, Mr. Barnhart. All right. Uh, any questions on purchase order? Uh, internal budget revisions, Mr. Wine, you have some?
I will. The sheriff does.
Okay. You have some to present to us?
I do, thank you. Um, so the sheriff has a few, uh, starting with his, uh, vehicle supplies. Uh, he, he, he was asking to move for the council permission to move four dollars from material supplies to his maintenance repair to auto. So, not really sure what they did there. Most of that stuff is stock.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I didn't, you know, they had a line on you.
They don't. It's, was zero.
Okay.
Three dollars and seventeen cents expenditure.
Got it covered.
Yeah.
Man, we gotta, we gotta watch his budget a little closer. I mean, it's three dollars.
Right.
I mean, this is...
Yeah.
Uh, his next one is, uh, he needs to reduce a negative deficit in his professional services. Yet again, looking to move four, three thousand and eleven dollars for material supplies. Uh, the, the next one, uh, would be for his printing line item, uh, to move five hundred and sixty dollars from materials and supplies to printing, uh, to reduce a deficit or to amend the deficit. And from overtime, uh, he's looking to move, uh, two thousand dollars from his salary line item down into his overtime line item. Uh, and I believe the last one, uh, is from, uh, no, that's tax office, from two twenty-six. Uh, it's four hundred and thirty-two dollars, uh, that he's looking to remedy by moving money from material supplies down into bonds and insurance.
All right, anybody have any questions for Mr. Wine? Don't make it too easy on him. All right, we have some changes status. We have a new hire recommendation received by Randy Lilly, Director of Emergency Management for James Shawn Wolford, uh, as the emergency manager effective June first, two thousand twenty-one, with a salary of fifty thousand dollars. A new hire recommendation received from Sheriff Nathan Harmon for Robert Diaz as a part-time administrative assistant, this slash dispatcher effective April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one, with an hourly rate of fourteen, fourteen dollars and fifty-six cents.
Mr. President, you, you approved a new hire recommendation for this position probably two weeks ago, and the person was to take that position the day they were started. They declined the offer.
Okay.
This is just still in the same position at this weekend.
All right. We have a change in status received from Jennifer Swisher, nine-one-one Director for Christina Sandova. Was, oh, right?
Sandova.
The ball, I'm sorry. Uh, to go, to go from telecommunicator two to senior communicator, uh, telecommunicator effective April first, two thousand twenty-one, with a salary change from forty-three thousand thirty-eight dollars to forty-three thousand eight seventy-four. And Morgan West to go from telecommunicator two to a senior telecommunicator. In addition to receiving her certified training officer increase effective April first, two thousand twenty-one, with a salary change of, from forty-three thousand five sixty-three to forty-four thousand three seventy-four. Change in status received from Tim Ziya, Community Correction Director for Thomas Anderson, to go from peer recovery coach, uh, for the QRT to case manager for the QRT effective May third, two thousand twenty-one, with a salary change from thirty-four thousand five fifty-five ninety-nine to forty thousand sixty dollars. Resignation received from the Assessor's Office from Michelle Keith, um, who transferred to, uh, to the Fire Board effective April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Resignation received from the Day Report Center for Cassidy Moore's effective, um, April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Any questions on the change in status? We have a set of minutes. Everyone was present for April the eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Any changes or corrections for those? County Council, County Council, um, will be meeting next Thursday on the twenty-ninth here in the chamber. And Boards and Commissions, we have Library at five P M. tonight. Ambulance Authority for tonight has been canceled. Mr. Wine, I think that's what she was talking to me about earlier today about Boards and Commission meetings. Um, and let me see, the twenty-sixth, May, um, Monday, the twenty-sixth, one P M. Region Nine, one P M. Historical Landmarks, five P M. Water District. On Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, at ten A M. C V B, three P M. Senior Services. Any changes or corrections to Board and Commissions?
Yes, sir. Uh, the Health Department, which was scheduled this week on the nineteenth, uh, was, uh, moved up to the twenty-sixth because, um, we forgot to schedule it on the nineteenth. So, I'll have the Board of Health and the Water District kind of conflicting. And I think, um, Region Nine is going to have a meeting on the twenty-sixth also.
Okay. Talked to Mr. Kearns yesterday morning going to work and just checking in and make sure him and his staff are doing okay and...
Yeah.
Um, holding together is the best I can say, probably.
Well, with the, uh, the vaccinations moved to Charlestown only two days a week.
Right.
That will give them three days a week.
He's, he, he's saying that there's, um, they must have done some yesterday too. Um, but he said there was only four hundred people that signed up. He said, you know, the, the...
Well, the interest is starting to slack off.
Yeah, he's saying, he's saying, you know, we've done a good job. Um, uh, I, I think he, basically, the, the state was thinking that we could be doing a better job, but at the same time, people aren't signing up.
Yeah.
And, you know, they were wanting to do, what, four thousand shots a day? And they had four hundred people sign up.
Yeah. And, you know, it's, that, that's the way things go with vaccinations and, you know, things. And, you know, you, it's public education and public perception and, you know. Of course, I'll hear more about it on the twenty-sixth.
Well, I think the state or, and the health officials, I don't mean it in a bad way, are, I think, in, um, assuming that a hundred percent of your population wants to get vaccinated. And that's not the case.
No.
So, but anyway.
If they can get seventy percent, they'd be happy.
Yeah.
Of the population. That, that's when you start getting herd immunity.
Yep. All right. Um, any other changes to Board and Commissions? We, um, entertain a, um, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent, the consent agenda for April the twenty-second, twenty-one.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Good morning, Mr. Hess. You have one personal tax exoneration due to, uh, taxpayer error.
I do.
Good morning. Looks like you guys got it all in you.
Hey, we got it under control.
Double, double tap today. Yes, sir. Uh, first thing I have would be that taxpayer error. We just have one and for that, Mr. Elder, he did not remove his vehicle, the Nissan from his posted property returns, so that's a taxpayer error. Just have that one for fifty-three dollars and twenty cents.
Entertain a motion on the one personal tax exoneration due to taxpayer error.
Mr. President, I move, do we accept the, uh, one, uh, personal property exoneration due to taxpayer error in the amount of fifty-three dollars and twenty cents?
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion on the motion? If not, that was a positive, right? Yeah. You made a positive motion.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, all in favor say aye. The nays?
Nay.
Uh, the motion fails.
Thank you.
I do have four office error personal property exoneration that's been over. Um, the reasons that's listed there. The first one, I think, is keep, keep the amount long. And the other three is just for Homestead that's been taken off the last three years. We did, we just called, we had to correct that. Total amount of those four, uh, was nine hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-two cents.
All right, we have four personal taxes exoneration due to office error. Entertain a motion.
Does it make a motion to approve the exoneration as provided by the assessor?
Yeah, we have a motion.
Nine hundred and twelve dollars to give to you.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Yes, you do.
Second. All right. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
We have, uh, four consolidations of property.
I do. You want to do them all at one time?
Yes, sir, that's fine.
Okay. First one's for Robert Barat. Uh, he has two parcels in the Martin Luther District, map fifteen, parcel sixty-four, sixty-five. He wanted to put them together just to get one tax bill. He also owns, uh, two other parcels in Martinburg, map fourteen, parcel three eighty-seven point one and three eighty-seven. Same deal, wants to just get one tax bill for those two. Uh, we have another one for Robert Barat for Martinburg in map fourteen, parcel three eighty-seven point two and three eighty-eight. Same deal for all three of them, uh, just getting one tax bill. I do have one for, uh, David Bob, Bob, I guess, that's it. Martinburg District, map ten, parcel one thirty-two and one twenty-six point one. Same deal, put them together, just get one tax bill. Just those two.
Entertain a motion on the four consolidations of property.
Sir, move.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. Board meeting reports, Mr. Barnhart.
Uh, I already gave my board meeting report and that's it.
All right. Um, Mr. Gokenaire?
Uh, let's see, I had a planning commission meeting, which the, uh, Heather has the annual report, uh, nearly completed. She's got some clerical errors, uh, that she wants to clean up and get presented to the council, hopefully in the very near future. Uh, had several public hearings, uh, most of them requesting variances, uh, throughout the evening. The, uh, I have yet, yesterday with the Parks and Rec, uh, today is the deadline for applications for the new director, and they have a committee set up, uh, this week to start looking at the different resumes.
Do you know how many resumes you've got?
I don't. I didn't ask because, you know, today is still...
Yeah.
Still have to accept them today. But, um, all the programs are growing, you know, they got children, you know, are, are active again and, and...
Imagine they're busting at the same time to get back out.
They are, and, uh...
Is the rec center open now since you don't have the...
Yes, sir.
...shot series?
Yeah. Uh, they had switched everything mostly to go to the Randy Smith Center during that time, but so now it's kind of flowing itself back out.
I noticed, I think it was the last weekend, we went by the Randy Smith Building, uh, rec center, and they had a basketball tournament going. I mean, it's, it's, um, parking lot was full.
Yeah. Uh, let's see. They're also, uh, they've also, which I think this has kind of been going ongoing, they're working a little closer with the C V B to see what type of opportunity they can get, where they can work together, you know, to be able to promote each other's, um, assets and stuff. Uh, yesterday I was on the radio with R and R, and that was a good morning, so.
Good. Robin Day's fine. Um, I don't have anything to report on, although I did have a, sent, uh, a nine-one-one Advisory Committee meeting, and I, it was not, uh, didn't attend. Um, so, um, Jennifer usually reaches out to me if there's an issue, so it was pretty quiet. But, anyway, uh, everything good on my end. Um, Board and Commission vacancies? Um, we have Steve Camby, uh, and Chris Fincham for Central Dispatch Advisory Board.
Mr. President, I move to, uh, renew the ex, the term of Steve Camby and Chris Fincham of the Central Dispatch Advisory Board.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Yes, sir, I have a second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. And also Hunter Wilson for the Fire Board.
Mr. President, I move to, uh, renew Hunter Wilson's term as a member of the Burke County Fire Service Board.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Um, I'd just like to elaborate. We have a resignation in our packet as well for Bobby Butler.
I saw that.
Uh, for the Development Authority. Um, Bobby just celebrated his ninety-third birthday. And, um, Bobby's been an outstanding citizen of Burke County. Um, he, he's, uh, very well-liked and, uh, individual and, um...
Well-respected.
Well-respected. The whole Butler family is. And, and, uh, just want to thank Bobby, uh, for his time of service and, um, dedication and, and, uh, wish him the very best. So, hopefully we'll see him in here once in a while.
Yeah, hope he has another ninety-three years.
Yeah, yeah. Well, them Butlers, man, they, they have a pretty long life.
Yeah.
You know, they, they, they see, see their good years. I know Bruce does well as, so...
As well as Bill.
Yeah.
Bill's ninety, I think.
Right.
Still out working every day.
I know, I know.
That's one.
Yep. Um, all right, so we're ahead of schedule, and I don't see Mr. Hogman here. So, Mr. Wine, uh, you want to go over bed recommendation for the Sally Port roof?
I, surely. So, as the council may recall, on the fifteenth of April, you opened sealed bids, competitive bids for roof replacement, membrane replacement on the Sally Port Judicial Center. Three bids were received. Uh, of those three bids, Allen formed a committee that was himself, Jack Lang, and Tracy McCormick. They reviewed, uh, there were two options, requested a twenty and a thirty-year option. Uh, and that committee through Allen is, is requesting approval for twenty-seven thousand four hundred and eighty dollars, uh, for a thirty-year membrane from Heritage Roofing. As we all know, they most recently did the Sheriff's Department at five-ten South Raleigh, and I believe, weren't they five-twenty also?
I don't know about that, but I know they've done the one, they, um...
Yeah, Tracy said, yeah.
Yeah, and they also done Fire Board down there, I believe, for, for the, uh, South Berkeley.
So, I wasn't on the committee, but all three are in agreeance, and we all know the work. So, if the council sees fit, asking you to approve twenty-seven thousand four hundred and eighty dollars to Heritage Roofing for a thirty-year...
Plus a replacement, um, per sheet.
A replacement per sheet of a hundred dollars, pardon me.
Yes, sir, anything bad.
Right.
All right, so have a, uh, do we have a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we accept the, uh, recommendation to approve Heritage Roofing in the amount of twenty-seven thousand four hundred and eighty dollars and one hundred dollars per sheet will do a replacement of damaged sheeting.
All right, have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Second, any discussion on the motion?
Do you know when to start?
Uh, Tracy, did they say when they were available to start? I don't know.
That's the big thing, right?
Getting material.
Yeah.
Is, is there any, like, vents or air conditioning units or anything up there?
No, no, that literally just covers the Sally Port, so it's a pretty easy job. You shouldn't interfere with it. Maybe a little noise.
Pretty small job, those.
It is.
Yeah. Okay.
We need to vote.
Yeah, we have a motion. We had a second. Uh, we had discussion. Um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Uh, just going to talk about proposed address, uh, ordinance changes, Mr. Wine.
Sure. So, in two thousand and nine, uh, my team began doing what was contractually done for Central Dispatch with regard to addressing, um, point gathering in the field for locations, building footprints, road center lines, and so on and so forth. And we've grown that responsibility from then to now. Um, we've been, we were then in communication with Director Catley, uh, with the changes that migrated, and then ultimately with Director Swisher. Uh, and as of January first, we began doing and fielding all calls, all interfacing with the public, as well as doing the back end technical. So, um, we tested the waters now since January first to make sure things were fine, and the cohesiveness was there, and everything's working great. I gave the existing ordinance to Anthony. First discussed with Allen, of course, we gave it to Anthony for read and approve when I rewrite. The changes in the document only changed the department to do the work. There's absolutely no changes to what the county does, how it does it, or what it wants to do. It just takes the burden from nine-one-one administrative staff to G I S administrative staff for addressing. That's the all the changes that are in there. Basically, the changes are from Burke County Central Dispatch to Burke County Central Dispatch. Uh, and it, that, it, it is important in that workflow that nine-one-one's still being involved. Uh, we don't dispatch, although we understand no phonetics, so we, we would understand that you wouldn't want Smith Drive with a T H and I E Smith Drive for fear that you would end up at the wrong location. So, we've worked out a process when it comes to naming that we interface with them and they bless it. We publish it as a...
Now, the I T guru that you are in your department, is there kind of like a pool of names out there that are available and ready to send?
They're on the website. There, it's a, it's a approved road name master list that exists now. And you can pick from that list that are already approved and available. So, you can look at that list and say, that's what I want, this one I want on the road name. Uh, if you want your own road name, uh, that's when you go through the process, making a request not on the list.
Okay.
In that instance, we would reach down and say, hey, we got this. We think it's okay to you approve. So, we wouldn't want to cut them out of the process, but we've been doing the work. This is just...
Right, right.
Just a change in paper.
Right, all right, all right. Um, need a motion to, um, approve the proposed addressing ordinance changes.
Chairman, I make a motion that we, uh, accept the recommendations from Deputy County Administrator Gary Wine on the address convention.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any, um, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Um, well, I know Clint and them just showed up, so, and we're ahead of schedule. Um, and you have more people coming, so I guess we'll take a short break.
Here we go.
Here we go. Um.
That program, since June of 2018, has now cleaned a thousand miles of garbage. That's spread over one hundred and twenty-four different roads. They collected over eight thousand four hundred bags of trash. And four thousand seven hundred and nine items that are too large to fit in a trash bag. As a result, our roads are cleaner. Our quality of life is improved. And I know that I can personally attest. My learned experiences, if you want to see how much litter you have, wait till the end of the month. Snow has laid the grass down, and anything that's littered is... This is the first February the roads that I drive are significantly cleaner than they were any previous year. And this is the reason for it.
One other thing, my number was, I was pulling up an email while I was talking earlier, Clint. The tonnage so far, from the email that I have on April the eighth, was four hundred and seventy thousand nine hundred and eighty-four pounds. I should say pound, not tonnage, but that's a huge amount of trash.
Right. And that doesn't count the weight of the tires.
Right.
And that doesn't count electronics and things that are recycled.
Right.
That is the items that either go to insorgement or go to recycling. Amazing program. And I'm very grateful to this council for taking the leadership. As Mike Lang, as Chief Marketing, Mike Lang often says, you know, he often says to me, "It's truly a team effort." You've got a role that the courts play, and the community service folks play, prosecuting attorney's office plays, and the Solid Waste Authority, and Apple Valley. And it takes that team to all work together. It's very clear that the program you folks set up is working. However, one other observation, it's starting about a little over a year ago. We began to notice that there was more miles being cleaned at the end of the week than in the first, maybe year of the program. And we began to scratch our head about how they were getting more miles done. We found a reason why. And that was a coincides with the exact time that the leadership of the road crew changed to Alan Hart. And Alan, someone we'd like to recognize, he has a, we just simply saw a surge in mileage being cleaned. And he has this approach of no games, no excuses, just get it done. And even though the number of bags that are coming in are, you know, more than we'd all like to see, he keeps a positive attitude and it just keeps going out. So, on behalf of the Solid Waste Authority, I ask the council to join me in recognizing the efforts of Alan Hart. It was 2020 that we were supposed to do this in December. Do you have anything you want to say?
I'd like to thank the councilmen for everything you all have done. I'd like to thank Mike for everything he's done. I'd like to thank the team for all the community service people. No, we're stepping up, coming over and helping. I'd like to thank my wife, Tammy, everybody. Thank you all.
I'd really want to thank her. Clint, if I may, I've known Alan Hart for many, many years. Grew up with my daughter, Ashley, and stuff, and I've always found Alan to be an outstanding individual. He's a good guy. He works really hard and does a great job for Berkeley County and Mr. Lang and for the community as a whole. And it's been an honor, Alan.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, I didn't meet him until December of 2019, and I have the same perspective of him. Fantastic. The next plaque I'd like to present is actually to a company. It's actually to Apple Valley Waste. Unfortunately, the Director of Operations was supposed to be here and can't make it. As typical when you're a Director of Operations, you have emergencies. One appeared this morning. But I want to talk a little bit about Apple Waste, Apple Valley Waste. We just talked about doing a team effort. And Apple Valley, when we created the program, one of the concerns we had was how we're going to afford trash disposal. How are we going to afford, you know, whose budget is this going to come out of? To set up containers and pay for the landfilling costs. And so, we went to Apple Valley Waste, and I don't know if you folks know, they provided eight containers at our two...
It's up to eight now?
It's eight containers at our two recycling centers.
Because it was one at the start.
It is up to eight, yeah. And they're the smaller fifteen-yard containers, which makes it easier for the road crew to get things into them. And they have emptied those containers one hundred and sixty times over since June 2018. And they've done it with never sending a bill, never complaining, never saying anything other than, "We'll get to it in the next twenty-four hours."
Matt, make sure we get that out, how much of a community partner they are, please.
Yeah, literally saving our program, the cost of our program, tens of thousands of dollars. And, you know, and not just our program. Some of us remember life before Apple Valley Waste. There was one holler, and there was a sort of a monopoly in the area. And when Apple Valley moved in, a different perspective. I know the complaints in our office dropped from a dozen a day to virtually nothing. And there was no curbside recycling, there was no pay by the bag, there was no insorgement. And, you know, they've done a lot for us, for the county. Set down, you know, literally just a couple of weeks ago, their Vice President sat down with them and talked about the future, where they felt they did fit in helping the county of this Solid Waste programs and policies. So, again, unfortunately, they couldn't be here. I have a plaque for them, and I would say to their county and the office. Brad Ripken, the Director of Operations, was supposed to be here today, so I'm going to present this to them.
Clint, it's, what a strong community partnership that is. You know, one of the things we did decide is to go out there and try to make our roads cleaner. We've made good progress, and Court Marshal Lang told me that the unfortunate thing is that we're getting more bags per mile again. And I was hoping to change that stigma. And for Apple Valley Waste to continue to do what they are doing with those dumpsters is just huge.
Yeah. One of the reasons why it's grown is because they saw an opportunity to divide the waste that comes off the road into what can be used to make hills and what has to go to the landfill. So, the Solid Waste Authority staff works with Mike's crew and try and get that done right as it comes off the truck. And so, when we literally call Apple Valley to say one of those containers is full, we'll say this number needs to go to the insorgement, and this number needs to go to the landfill. Roughly half of them go to insorgement.
And you know, this whole thing is a little bit, you know, back thirty years ago, forty years ago, you didn't have the trash that we have on the roadside today. So, this is another thing that we're, a service that we're having to provide that we've never had to do before. So, we got to find it in our budget, and it's another prime example of people not understanding the task that we do today that we didn't do before.
And that extends to our streamers as well.
Right.
Over just if they clean up initiatives, Berkeley County, Berkeley County in the state, that has to have a crew and get into the stream cleaning and pull the trash. So, I'm going to get their name wrong, but Stormwater District funds the Solid Waste Authority's programs where they send use out in the summer months, but in boats and cold tires, use up out of the creeks. And I look forward to starting that program up again in the preseason. It's actually something that I often go out and do with them. It's a nice way to get outside, get away from my normal desk routine, but I enjoy it.
So, you're going, you're floating the creeks with the canoes, I guess, right?
Yep.
And then, what happens when a canoe gets full before you get to your drop-off point?
Yeah, once it's full, you just finish the float to wherever you're getting out.
Okay.
Put it in my truck, and I take it to the same containers that Apple Valley donates, and we divide it from insorgement to landfilling, and it's the same way as the roadside. Yeah. So, actually, the last presentation for the evenings for this morning is one of my favorites. Definitely a unique situation. It's a social media network, I guess is what you'd call it. It's, they call themselves WB Litter Busters. It's a Facebook site that connects local and statewide cleanup efforts and recycling activities that's going, that's happening across the state. Those cleanup activities could be our roadside program, my stream cleanup program, equal programs going on downstate, could be an individual just going out picking up ten pieces of litter and doing the proverbial selfie on Facebook. So, it was just started last spring, by one person. It's now grown to over four hundred and thirty followers.
Great.
From their Facebook site, I stole their three goals. Join together with others across the state to pick up litter and preserve the beauty. Learn and share about the impacts of litter on the environment. Participate in litter challenges to make proactive, positive change in our community. So, the site is used for tire cleanups, stream cleanups, as I mentioned. Everything that we're doing in Berkeley County ends up on there. If I want to learn about what's going on on the Ohio River, that's the place to go. If I want to learn what's going on in the Coal River, the Guyanese, it's the place to go. It's actually turned out to be a tool for solid waste planners to see what other communities are doing across the state and how they're doing, and maybe you can steal an idea. So, this neat little group, WB Litter Busters, has a creator and an administrator that's all of energy, and it's a resident from Falling Waters, and her name is Rebecca Catlett. She's with us this morning. So, on behalf of the Solid Waste Authority and the council, we accept this. Thank you so much for what you're doing. I will say that Solid Waste Authority, Berkeley County altogether, often win or come in second place on the statewide cleanup, or Clean County Award, or what the DEP does. We won last year because of WB Litter Busters. Clint, anything you want to say?
Yes, I wasn't sure. Could you get our photo for you a little bit?
Okay.
Hello and good morning, or good afternoon. My name is Rebecca Catlett, and I'm here today representing the West Virginia Litter Busters, and I wish each of you a happy Earth Day. So, I never imagined that nine months ago, when I started the West Virginia Litter Busters, that I'd be standing here today, getting an award. I was inspired to begin the group last summer when my sister and I, on our annual West Virginia Waterfall adventure trip, went to Saberton, West Virginia, where we visited Deckard Creek Falls. The falls are absolutely beautiful. The trail to the falls, however, was a littered mess, and it broke my heart. My sister and I grabbed a bag, we picked up the litter from the parking area down to the waterfall. Didn't take very long, it didn't take much effort, but it made a tremendous impact. And I kept thinking about it. And as we visited the different state parks every day for the week, and we visited several places around this beautiful state, we continued to see littered spots that continued to break my heart. But we decided to be part of the solution, not part of the pollution. And I kept thinking about how much impact one person could have on the litter problem. And when I traveled back home to Berkeley County, I continued to see litter along the roadside, in the waterways, in parking lots, everywhere. And again, I was inspired. So, I started a group on Facebook. I called it the West Virginia Litter Busters, invited all my Facebook friends, and I was hoping that maybe twenty-five of my friends or family would join. Today, we host over four hundred and thirty members, many of which I've never met in person, across twenty-two counties, and as well as many children and teenagers that participate in our litter cleanups. Our youngest litter buster, Hannah Radford of Gilmer County, is just a year old. Family, friends, and neighbors have joined forces to organize litter cleanups everywhere, not just here in Berkeley County. Some members, however, have adopted spots right here in Berkeley County. For some, it's been the street that they live on, or the block they live on, the parking lot where they work, or maybe a favorite waterway. Members are issued monthly challenges via our Facebook group. Some of the challenges have included roadside challenges, friends and family challenges, but probably the most meaningful was Noah's Litter Challenge, which we intend to do annually every July. Noah's Litter Challenge honors the life of Noah Shaffer, a student at Spring Mills High School that passed unexpectedly. Noah loved the waterways of Berkeley County. He loved a pecking creek, for example. He loved to poke around there, look for rocks, look for creatures. He had dreams of being a meteorologist. And so, every July, we plan to honor Noah by having Noah's Litter Challenge and picking up litter specifically along waterways in Berkeley County. Together, our members have picked up thousands of pieces of litter. We used to try to keep track. After twenty-something thousand, we lost track, but we have picked up thousands of pieces of litter. Most of these pickups have been along the roadway, in residential neighborhoods, creeks, and waterways. We love this state. We love West Virginia. We think it's a beautiful state and country, and we want to keep it beautiful, not just for ourselves, but for future generations. And I invite each of you to join the West Virginia Litter Busters if you're on Facebook, or even if you're not. I do thank you for this recognition. It means the world. And I accept it not on my behalf, but humbly on behalf of every member of the West Virginia Litter Busters group. Thank you, and again, happy Earth Day.
Thank you for your dedication as well. Litter has became a tremendous problem in Berkeley County and probably pretty much throughout the state and the nation. I'd like to be able, I guess, Clint, we're trying to, the only one of the ways we can do this is try to educate our way out of this. And sad to say, there's so many young children that aren't taught the right way to deal with trash. And I know our grandchildren, they see a piece of trash, they'll go to pick it up. And today, the past year and a half, you got to be careful, you know, of what they pick up. But I walk across the parking lot, man, they'll stop and jerk out your hands to try to pick up a piece of trash, because that's what we do. And we need more of it. And I know Alan would say he'd like to see more of it, but...
And that's what's great about West Virginia Litter Busters, is the individual response of middle.
Right. Well, one of the things that our litter program did was they were picking up litter on Route Nine West when the governor was coming through, and the governor was sure to see them. And I get a phone call last week, and they said that they had crews out on eighty-one trying to pick up litter. And Matt's working on that, trying to make sure that, you know, get with our US Senators and Congressmen and let them know that, hey, Berkeley County's doing, and the state with the governor's office, and let them know that we're doing our part on the secondary roads. Can you please contribute to help us on interstate, if you want? And I know with Governor Tomlin, if anybody wanted to work overtime at the state road shed, I was told that the only way they got overtime was to clean up litter on eighty-one. So, yes, Matt.
We do have a lot of children and a lot of teenagers that participate in our challenges. You've had some schools participate in our challenges. So, I just am a bit sure that we do feel like we are trying to educate young people.
Oh, I know.
And about things like, where's the, like, when something goes down, the storm drains, where is it again? You know, educating them about things like that.
Right, right.
The impact of a cigarette butt on a waterway. We try to do a lot of education about the impacts of litter.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, thank you for doing that. And Matt, I know he's working on, you know, our celebration of Berkeley County for the summer. It's going to be a week-long program of cleanup, you know, anything and everything that we can do. So, hopefully, we'll shine more. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate everybody that has been recognized today. I know firsthand about Mike Lang's crew. You know, I've had several complaints over a period of time about people calling and say, hey, this stretch of road is absolutely terrible, you know. So, make a phone call, say, hey, Mike, can you get a look at this, see what's going on there? And a few days later, you get a phone call and say, yes, it's been taken care of. Thank you for that. But, you know, a lot of these programs, Clint, would not be successful without your leadership. And, you know, you're a longtime leader in the Solid Waste. And, you know, you and your organization deserve a tremendous amount of credit and thanks for what you do. Pulling everybody together and making things happen. You make a big difference.
Thanks, Clint. It's not just Clint. I'm sure it's you, Ron.
Well, I'm sure there is.
I've also been here, and last week, I worked in our office, the program administrator, and John Christensen here, a longtime board member.
I recognize John. Thank you, John.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Clint. We're going to take a break here. I just have one last thing I got to do. Any items from the public? Mr. Funkhauser, come on up. I only did that because I seen you walk in the door.
I got tired of sitting over at the dark. My brother turned the lights out on us for about half a day. So, I figured, what else am I going to do? It's too cold to go for a walk. I brought to you, in order to help you understand, I got Minute Book H from Berkeley County, eighteen oh one, eighteen oh five. It's part of Landmarks Collection. We have the entire basement of the courthouse recorded, so we can work from it. I think it's part of the initial efforts of Frank Silver to make sure that public access can be granted but limited due to the original document. And so, we were researching, I'm involved with Matthew Foundry, which they're doing a pretty big project, and we're looking at that bridge. So, we came to understand that this is the historical map, in large map of the county. But in January of eighteen oh two, the county chose to extend German Street, which goes behind Orsini's, dang, I'm saying, that'd be nuts. Goes behind Orsini's and then up through to Aspen Hall, Edward Beeson. Edward Beeson happens to be buried over in the Quaker Cemetery over on Tuscaloosa Drive. Or Tuscaloosa Drive or King Street extension. So, we discovered that the oldest bridge in the county, because that's not, it's on the city map, but it's actually in the county, it's in the county, it's not the city. It was a town of Martinsburg, which meant it had no jurisdiction outside of the county. So, the oldest bridge in the county may in fact date to, the earliest we found it in the records is eighteen twenty. And we're working with that group to help preserve that bridge for ingress and egress.
Where's that bridge at?
It is, if you know where Matthew Foundry is, it is west.
Oh, the one behind that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that bridge is in the county minute books for being supported by the county for improvement of eighteen twenty. And the stone arches that exist there go back to that eighteen twenty. And subsequently, through years up through eighteen forty-five, then the city charter comes in in nineteen twenty-three. City Martinsburg created, they annexed that piece of property. And the way that we do that, the way we correspond to that is here is that the poorhouse, because of laws of Virginia, the poorhouse had to fall outside of the town limits. And the poorhouse is right here, which is Norborn Hall. So, that entire corner, including German Street, that was the poor farm, that was the farm. It's all developed now. But that's a result of the records that we have. And so, now we've figured out that Watkins Ferry, the road from Watkins Ferry to Licron Plantation, was started in eighteen oh one, because we chose to come before you to get the letter of support. That road leading from Watkins Ferry to Beddington was actually created by the county in eighteen oh one with William Pendleton and Porter Field. And so, what they would do, they would assign, they would assign the titibles within a two-mile radius of the road. So, all the tax margins would, around that area, would go directly to the development of that road.
My wife and I was riding the CNO Canal on Sunday between Shepherdstown and Brunswick, and Packhorse Ford crosses the Potomac there, which is the same Packhorse Ford Road up here at Pike Side, I guess. And then it goes where from there?
Into Back Creek Valley.
Okay.
All the way over, it sort of parallels Route Forty-five and goes all the way, oh my God, through the Virginia line. That's the oldest road, that is the oldest road trail in the state, per se. It runs along the...
It's not, right, right, but it's still not, is it still a hundred percent recognizable road?
No.
Right, right.
You wouldn't fight that battle. Bits and pieces of it. Historic roads traditionally are, do not have road cuts, so they'll follow great.
Correct.
And that's where you kind of get cattywampus, because people say, oh, this is the original road. Now, if there are road cuts, they, you know, they have toothpicks to bang out rocks, so...
Well, to the west of Back Creek, there was the original, Route Nine was down through there, to the left of the one that's there now, right there at the church and the school.
Yeah, eighteen oh two, they petitioned to run the road from Back Creek to Hedged Hill.
Okay.
And there's some things you don't announce out loud that are written into the minute books, but it was to run from one person's property to the other. So, that road was actually began in eighteen oh two. So, we just linked the land grants and the deed searches, and then we can juxtapose that original road that goes through there, which then sets off some of your meets and bounds, but we're not across that bridge. And but we were doing this research on the bridges of Berkeley County, and we thought, well, that's pretty interesting that you assume that that bridge is in the city, but it wasn't in the city. It was actually in the county. And the city was not the city. It was actually a town within the county. And everything was run the same way altogether across it. So, the town and the county, they were inseparable.
So, how, how old is the Matthew Foundry building?
Eighteen thirty-one. It's actually the oldest, it was the oldest business in Berkeley County as well as the state. So, it's significant. So, we're hopeful that that adaptive reuse will serve as a model, that, you know, the BMW properties is a great partnership. And we're just hopeful that they'll be successful. We put them in contact with groups that can assist them in their endeavor. So, we're hopeful that that, you know, but ingress and egress was a problem. And just as you understand things in the bigger scope, the bigger scheme, the bigger picture of things, it kind of makes you appreciate it.
It's a nice building.
Yeah, it's a nice area.
What's what the consumers feel? Are they recycling or taking it down for...
Yeah, consumer fuel would delight the day to a certain condition. And so, they have plans to save the majority of the facade, which will go to the store district. But the backside of that building was deteriorated. It had become a shelter sort of, so to speak.
Shelter for cats, I know that.
Yeah, I love cats. They taste like chicken.
The other way, babe.
They do, they do. They taste like chicken. And, of course, don't laugh, but they taste good.
Chinese restaurant.
Oh, I know, I know, you're going down, but I rode there, but we fixed one at our house at the open plain. So, the, that's funny. I'm off track now, I forget, whatever.
You're saying, what did I just say?
I don't give a crap, man, I'm tired. I went over to the archives, and it's freezing cold and dark over there. I went over to the archives, and it's freezing cold and dark over there. It's outside about an hour, so my brain starts short now. And I was like, ah, what the heck? I turned on YouTube and said, oh, well, Copenhagenans actually back, we'll just go and see. And then I saw Alan Davis had all his work done, which is amazing what they did. Alan Davis is amazing.
No comment, sir.
I want, I want the name of that doctor, that's amazing what they did. I mean, malpractice, that's okay. But yeah, just, just understanding the relationship between the county and the city is infinite. And it should be, it should be brought to light that the county and the city work in concert and advance things. So I'm kind of hoping as we go through this and bring back and resurrect some of the, you know, and I'm going to tell you, I'm going to come in the next couple of months and inform you of some things that you may own jointly with the city that we've never understood before, that we didn't know before, that I now know, and some things that would assume that the city owned, the county owns and the county owns the city. So just clarifying that.
Yeah, we know a couple of them.
Being able to start out that dialogue that there's a few things that we would like to move forward on and get cleaned up. So that's it before I, before I go. But I was going to come and read this whole book to you, since you got the docket.
One of these days, I'm going to take some of your time, and you're going to catch me up on some history.
No, I ain't spending any time.
You are too. It might be a dark corner, but we're going to spend some time.
We can zoom, we'll zoom. We zoom all night long. All day, we're fast, huh?
All right. Anyone else from the public? All right, Mr. Barnar, if you do, well, yeah, we can go ahead, and we'll recess and take photos.
I'm moving to recess.
All right, we'll recess and take photos.